Clock on the wall says it's actually three minutes after, but little traffic problem this afternoon for one of our members, so we are all here, all who are going to be here. So it's time for the regular October meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. Can you read the roll, please, ma'am?
Ms. Akers is absent. Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And I need a motion, pro forma motion, to excuse Ms. Akers tonight.
Make a motion to excuse Ms. Akers' absence today?
Second that motion.
And I have a second and we'll do that by general consensus.
Aye.
I'm sorry, guys, I didn't get the memo about gray suits tonight. Mine's just like gray. Okay. Agenda, staff, any additions, corrections, changes, deletions, we're good to go. I also need another motion for that. Don't be shy.
Motion to approve the minutes from September 5th, 2018?
No, we're doing, we're approving the agenda.
The agenda.
Right.
On ahead. Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second that motion.
And I have a second and we'll do that by general consensus. Now we can approve the minutes. Any changes, corrections, additions, et cetera. I'm sure you've read it word for word.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from September 5th, 2018.
Okay.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Take your pick, Melissa. And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight, we have one public hearing and three subdivisions. So without further ado, on the public hearing, just so you'll know, the way we do our public hearings is we have a presentation from the applicant, which in this case is the city, since it's some changes and updates to the zoning code. Then we have a staff report. Then we open the public hearing to input from the public. Once that's all done, we will close the public hearing, discuss it amongst ourselves, and then vote. So, fire away.
This is case number PC 18-11, for the purpose of reviewing an update to the zoning code.
Thank you. And the applicant/staff report will be next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're here with a few minor changes to the zoning code. The zoning code amendments are really being driven by the recent moratoriums on medical, marijuana cultivation, processing, and dispensaries. Instead of just looking at that in an isolated fashion, we wanted to see if there's any other changes that need to occur to the zoning code and do that comprehensively, since we do send these off to be codified in order for it to be recognized as a legal format on the state, so we want to do that all at once. So you'll see, one of the other issues we've been looking at, this addressing the zoning code this evening, is small cell facilities. You might have heard of or read about, there's some petitions or lobbyists of the state who have enacted some legislation to minimize the governance of small cell, microcell facilities, which will be typically located in the right-of-way. The limit of what you'll see here in the zoning code is should those be located on private property. We're working with our engineering department in order to see what the process would be and what the regulations might be if they're located similar to a public utility within the city's right-of-way, but we're looking at it in the zoning code for them being located on private property and how those should be regulated. Some of those conditions are similar to what you see with the radio ham antennas. We have some regulations for those, for amateur radio and antennas along those lines. But there are some definitions and some regulations for the small cell facilities in here. Another change would be to not allow any chain link or split rail fence over 48 inches in the rear or side yard. What we've seen is some concerns, anytime somebody puts up a split rail fence with chicken wire or a six-foot chain link fence in the backyard, it tends to look a little more institutional than residential. So we still do allow for a 42-inch, 48-inch fence, chain link fence in the rear yard, just nothing above that height shall be permitted in the rear or side yard. As far as parking and storage vehicles and recreational vehicles, we did add commercial in there, because we did have limitations on commercial construction and industrial vehicles and equipment being parked in residential neighborhoods, but what we found is some of these vehicles have been moved into our power centers, such as Lowe's, like the Lowe's parking lot, the Walmart parking lot. So we wanted to make sure we included commercial properties in that regulation, so we can enforce the removal of those vehicles that's there for a long-term period, over a weekend where they take up multiple parking spots. That takes away from the parking availability for some of the customers. Again, one of the biggest ones is the prohibition of medical marijuana dispensaries, cultivation, and testing and processing facilities. There is a provision here that does allow for the existing approved facility to move into a B3 or B4 district. We are suggesting that the wording be changed, the transfer only be allowed to a B3 or B4 zoning district as a conditional use, similar to what we went through last time, so as we don't give a blanket approval for any B3 or B4 zoning district within the city. So it still would have to come before this board and have to be notifications to everybody within 500 feet. The reason we had that language in there is, again, there was concerns about the size of the property where the current dispensary will be located, and if there is a need, the state does allow for a transfer of that license after 12 months of operation. So if we see an immediate impact, a negative impact in the areas, then we can work with them, hopefully facilitate a change in location to maybe a little bit more appropriate, more commercial area that's a little bit larger in size. But again, we would suggest that we add conditional use as part of that approval. And then the last ones, again, were just related to small cell facilities. And you'll see a lot of strikeouts in the table of permitted uses. We haven't eliminated those as permitted uses. What we've done is kind of combined those into general retail or trade schools, as opposed to getting specific about a stamp shop or a wig shop. You know, if we look too inclusive, it becomes a little more exclusive in terms of some uses that may not be outlined in here. So if we're pretty specific as a wig shop, if we get down to that level of detail, it kind of infers that we should have every use that you would ever anticipate be listed in this table of permitted uses. So what we've kind of done is looked at those, kind of consolidated them, put them in a different category as under general retail or trade school. We did, like, with exceptions of like a truck driver trade school, we know that entails more than just going to a typical trade school, so that is still separate. But you'll see, that's basically the changes, the gist of the changes that are in here are consolidating a lot of the retail into the general retail requirements, all similar regulations or same regulations for parking and the like, so we didn't feel like we needed to get that specific in the table of permitted uses. But with that, we are recommending approval of the changes in the zoning code and be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for keeping the city ahead of new technology before it comes and bites us, particularly these small cell facilities, because I've been reading about those and it's good that we're staying ahead of that. Okay, as this is a public hearing, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor, against, ask questions, or have any general comments about the changes? Please, step forward, and if you'd give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Pat Barton, 2109 Wedgewood Drive. I like the direction of the changes, and I have a question about what percent of Beaver Creek City property is zoned B3, B4?
We'll write that down and we'll address that in our discussion.
And I wanted to confirm, I think I heard 500 feet from churches, childcare, other types of businesses, right? So that would be important.
I believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, please, step forward, don't be shy. And give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening, Sidney Gearing at 1275 Oak Leaf Drive. And again, just asking for more clarification when y'all are talking, if you could, I'm wondering if this particular company, my understanding is that the prohibition would basically not allow any additional applicants for processing, cultivating, and even dispensaries, that the single applicant thus far approved is grandfathered. So my question is, would if ever that particular applicant who has that license, has approved through the state currently, were to ever leave as that business, does that then, do we have the language in place that would prohibit him selling it off to somebody else or coming in? So basically, could it then be done and gone? Or, that would be the direction I would like to see, knowing that we have ample elsewhere in the surrounding communities. So that's my question, is if you could just address that in your discussion, if we're postured and have the language able to move and put language to protect in that fashion? I think that's everything.
Thank you. We'll certainly address that. Others, don't be shy. Last chance. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
No.
No written input. Okay. Time for our planning commissioners, and I'm going to start on the left. That would be you.
Let's knock these out there. Do you happen to know what portion of Beaver Creek is?
I wouldn't wager a guess of exact percentage, but B2, for example, the last dispensary that went in, the legislation was drafted that the dispensaries be permitted conditionally in a B2, B3, and B4 district. I can tell you for sure, there's a lot more B2 districts than there are B3 and B4 districts. And when you add in the regulations for the 500-foot buffer from parks and all the things that the churches and schools that the state regulates, it significantly limits the number of B3 and B4 uses that would be available. B4 are very few and far between. B3, we have some that are underlying under PUDs, but B2 is the majority of that neighborhood community commercial office, where you see anywhere in proximity to residential districts. B4 is really defined as a highway business district, so you see some of those along Colonel Glenn Highway. B3 are more like mall area kind of of uses. B2 is when you really start getting into like Dayton-Zeonia or Fairfield, all along Dayton-Zeonia, and some of those areas that are mixed in with, near, mixed in with or near residential. So given, I don't know, while I don't know exact percentages, it's a significant decrease from areas that would otherwise have been permitted.
And then onto the next one, you know, given the current moratorium that's already in place, maybe this is for legal, if Harvest chooses to vacate, they can't then pass on their grandfathered status to others, right?
Well, so if I may, Jeff, it's an interesting question. The way the language is currently written, it's going to come back before this board as a conditional use if they seek, if Harvest seeks to transfer to another location within the city, which, you know, like Ms. McGrath pointed out, that might be beneficial for everyone involved, so we certainly want to be able to leave that open to them. The way it's drafted, they would be able to transfer their permit to another operator. Please jump in if you disagree with me here, Jeff, but they'd be able to transfer that permit to another operator for the location on Tonawanda if the state were to approve it. And further from that, because of the state regulations that are in place, I would caution putting anything in here that would try and limit their ability to do that. As a permit holder, they do have some rights that are granted to them under state law. So while we have, we certainly have some regulations in here that will bring the city in if there's a transfer from one location to another, being considered a transfer of that permit from one owner to another would likely just involve the parties themselves and the state of Ohio.
Yeah, and the only thing I could say from that, and I may be wrong on this, but, you know, when they came through the first time to get their provisional licenses, we did have to sign off on a compliance slip that said, yes, it's permitted, or no, it's not permitted. And if they were to resubmit that today, we would be able to check the box that, no, it's not permitted in the city of Beaver Creek, which the state may give consideration to if they're considering a transfer of ownership. I don't know legally if that's permitted. We can look into that a little bit more and maybe get back to you on that. But new locations other than for, what's the name of the Harvest, any other location other than Harvest for relocation, new license cannot be added, and they couldn't have a new location in the city.
All right. Thank you both. That's it.
Thank you.
Kind of took all of my questions, though, so I think I'm good at this time. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. I'd be remiss if I didn't. Since we've pretty well covered that, could you just characterize real quickly for folks who may not be aware of what these small, what they call a small cell? It's like a midget cell tower, but there are more of them, they're just smaller.
Right. So what you could possibly see is we have separation requirements within the right-of-way, but within the right-of-way, they can be 30 feet from each other, different carriers can have different locations. What we would encourage is location on existing facilities, but for example, if there's utility poles in the right-of-way that are not owned by the city, they're owned by DPL, they may, DPL may charge a lease space for them to be located on there. So this legislation gives them the right to put their monopole or their small cell tower facilities, similar to what a utility pole would be. And what that does is it's getting away from that direction of the big monopoles, the 200-foot monopoles, and it really does give a little bit faster service in more locations throughout the area, similar to what you see, electric lines, fiber lines, everything that runs down the right-of-way. This would allow for them to do that on a more frequent basis and get away from that monopole.
So these could actually be piggybacked on an existing utility pole or even a light, streetlight pole?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be what we would encourage, is co-location.
And my second question is about vehicle parking. I know we've had problems with some of our larger retailers parking semi-trailers for storage, even though the PUD doesn't allow it. Does this give us a few additional teeth to enforce that?
It does. What it really does is, you know, as ownership changes of these big power centers where you see the big anchors located, they are limited in what their enforcement ability. They're not necessarily in favor of letting these semis stay there over the weekends or what have you, but they don't really technically own the lot. And so we have, rather than going to the individual store managers and saying, you know, can we stop, can you do something about this, this gives us the language to actually cite and send a letter and make the owners of the property, even though they may be out of Ohio, send them a letter saying, here's a violation, will you please have authorized somebody to act on your behalf to enforce these regulations before we have to cite the property owner himself?
I've noticed in some of the really large parking lots, some of the large centers, that there are semis that are parked across seven or eight parking places.
That's fair.
Maybe out on the edge, but still, they shouldn't be there.
Right, and this also helps protect the tenants, they're not necessarily in favor of that either. It's just that it's out of their lack of control of the situation. Gives us more of an ability to go after the owner, make them aware of our regulations, and hopefully they can do something to enforce it.
Good. Always like to tighten up those little loopholes. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, further questions? Okay, I need a motion then.
I motion to approve PC 18-11.
Okay. Was there a typo in there that we need to fix?
Yes, there was. I'm glad you mentioned. I'm glad you mentioned that. As he was making the motion, I realized I had failed to mention it. On section 158, 126, there is some extra words in the second line where it says "Ohio law." That'll need to be struck through before it's given to council for approval.
Okay. So with that typo correction, 58, 126?
The second line. Second line of that section.
The second line, mhm. It says, upon the passage of this ordinance, and then it says, between commas, "Ohio law." That Ohio law needs to come out for. Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, so we, everybody's okay with that, since it's a typo, it's not anything deliberate that we have to actually make a change on? Okay, I have a motion.
Second that motion, Mr. Chair.
And I have a second, okay? If you can, read our roll, please.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, 4-0. And staff, thanks for keeping everything all up to date. We now have, we go through three subdivisions, the first one being Indian Ripple Center, Lot 3.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before use an application requesting approval of a replat in order to create a lot for the recently approved Raising Cane's Restaurant within the Indian Ripple Shopping Center. So the Raising Cane's received approval, as you all may recall, in February of 2018. At that time, they weren't sure if they wanted to create an actual lot or if they were just going to have lease lines. They're under construction right now, and they're getting pretty close to opening, and they decided that they would like to create a separate taxable lot, so that is what they're doing. It's basically just a 1.2219 acre lot that's being broken out from the at-home, the bigger at-home lot. So Lot 3A is the at-home, Lot 3B will be the Raising Cane's. All of the existing cross-access, cross-parking easements are going to remain, and we routed out to all agencies, they all recommend approval or approval with conditions. And staff is also recommending approval with the three conditions in the attached staff report. And I can answer any questions you have right now.
Gentlemen, I'll just kind of throw this open. Questions? Comments? This is what one of our previous planning commissioners referred to as a no-brainer. It's just cleaning up, cleaning up technicals. So, if there are no questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 18-5 with the attached three conditions, recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion, and I have a second. For the record, let's read the roll.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, 4-0. And we're back for another one. The woods, Section 6.
Okay, so the entire woods' specific site plan was approved in 1990. In 1999, Section 6, which is the highlighted area, was amended, some changes were made at that time. Now, in 2018, the applicant has made some additional tweaks to the, what was originally that approved specific site plan, with a modification that we did in-house. So this was the original approval for the entire Section 6. I believe at the time, it contained 40 lots. And now, so this is all of Section, this is all of Section 6 now, this is the reconfigured lots that they've done. They've reduced it by, I believe, four lots, so there are four less lots now, and a lot of the lots are just slight, I mean, we're not talking significant numbers, but they're slightly bigger, so lot lines have shifted. But you can see there's the darker shaded area and the lighter shaded area, so what the applicant is actually proposing is that the lighter shaded area is going to be the new Section 6, and then in the future, they're going to do Section 7. So right now, they're just seeking approval of this Section 6, which there was no future Section 7, but now there will be. So, staff, the applicant's requesting approval of Section 6, which will be 19 lots, ranging in size from approximately .14 acres to .28 acres. They seem small, but they are consistent with what's already out there and consistent with the original specific site plan approval. The roads are private, so you can see on the plan that the road is also its own separate lot, and then the green spaces also are also separate lots as well. There are impact fees that were put into place for this before we even had our impact fee ordinance, so each house that gets constructed has to pay an impact fee. It's somewhere around $700 per house, so that's also been added in the conditions. And we routed this out to all the area agencies, and they all recommend approval or approval with conditions. And staff is also recommending approval with five conditions in the attached staff report.
Thank you. Gentlemen, questions? I think I may be the only person on staff or Planning Commission who was here when we originally approved this, and it created a huge, it created a huge controversy, because it was about the first thing we did that wasn't a half-acre lot. And it really got folks upset, but it's turned out to be very good development. Gentlemen? I have one or two for you.
Sure.
The street width.
Yes.
It's a standard 24-foot? As I know, we've had some of the private developments where the streets are a little narrow.
Yeah, I believe that the widths in all of the woods are the 24 feet.
Okay.
Actually, 25 feet.
Okay, excellent. And my second question is, since it's taken a number of years to get to this, we've got a stubbed street that may be stubbed for a number of years, do you think we need to, and it's going to, people are going to get down to that stubbed dead end and then have to figure out how to turn around? Can we require, I know we've done this in the past, where we've required at least a temporary, little bit of extra asphalt for people to be able to turn around?
I know that the roads back there are concrete. We can talk to them about maybe putting something. I know that they're going to move forward with Section 7 very soon.
Okay.
The 6 and 7, the reason they split it up, that's some issues with the county in recording easements. So originally, they were going to record the whole thing, they decided to split it up into two sections. So this isn't going to be something that we approve now, and then, again, 20 years from now, we get to Section 7.
Okay.
Yeah, this is...
Okay, if these are going to follow one after the other, it shouldn't be a problem, but I know we've been in this situation before, and it creates a problem for the poor folks that have the last lot.
Sure.
Because people are pulling into their driveways to turn around all the time.
Yeah, I just don't want to require additional concrete.
Particularly not concrete, now. Okay, good. Thank you, ma'am. Did that generate anything else from y'all? Okay, I need a motion then.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve case number S 18-6 with five conditions.
Okay.
I'll second.
And I have a second.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, 4-0. And we're looking forward to yet another piece of the woods. We have one more subdivision, and that's Fairfield Place, Lot 1B.
Last one. So the applicant is requesting approval to replat the Fairfield Place subdivision to create two lots. The reason for this replat is to accommodate the recently approved Premier Office Building that came through Planning Commission a couple of months ago. The new lots, Lot 1 would be Lot 1C and 1D. 1D will contain the Premier Office Building, the 6.307 acres, and then Lot 1C will be that remainder lot that doesn't have any plans at this time. You may notice a change on this subdivision from what was approved with the Medical Office Building. Originally, the plan was for Premier to buy the access road that is adjacent to their property, and that has actually changed. They have a new agreement, a new maintenance agreement with the owner of the property, so the owner is going to keep that portion of the road, and they will be maintaining it, but we still do have that condition in there that is going to require them to, you know, bring it up to our current standard, sidewalk, curb, everything with it. So that's the only difference from what you saw when it went through the Planning Commission for the major modification. So staff is recommending approval of this replat with four conditions in the attached staff report, and I can answer any questions you have right now.
Thank you. Gentlemen, questions?
I just have one question.
Sure.
The road, so why the change on the road? Because obviously, we all know, if we know that access road, we all know it's less than kept.
I'm not sure exactly what the change was. I think the property owner wanted to maintain control of the road and the fact that now you have more tenants that can put into being able to maintain it.
So what does that agreement look like right now? I mean, because it's, yeah, just trying to understand how they're going to go forward with that, because we were going to get the road kind of fixed, and now, is there a guarantee that it actually gets fixed?
There is, and what happened was a change in the actual property management company. They changed the property management company from within their own family to hiring over realty or over development companies as being the property managers for all the properties within this area. There is an REA agreement in place, so they wanted to keep that to where the common areas are going to be maintained by an association. So if they brought this road out, they wanted to make sure all cross-access easements were in place and all the roads and everything were controlled as an association, not by an individual property owner, so nothing could change down the road from prohibiting access. So the REA agreement does allow the management company to go in there and make whatever repairs necessary and assess equally all the properties within the association. So what this does, like Sandra mentioned, this does still require that the road be grinded and milled and, you know, brought up to final course of asphalt, and what we would imagine that's going to happen on the entire roadway, and the cost will be shared by everybody within that development. What it does is keep a cohesive management plan there for the roads, as opposed to what we've seen, which really was our only option, when Hobby Lobby came in, they took their piece of the road. When Aldi came in... piece of the road, and when Aldi came in, they did their piece of the road. What this does is have one continuous maintenance plan for the whole, all the common areas within this development.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. That was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, now that you're about to sit down, Jeff, that means that the road will still remain a private street, but with full public access?
Absolutely. And that's what they wanted to ensure, all cross-access and public access, it maintains under one association, not an individual property.
Okay, yeah, that makes, that makes real good sense.
I just got one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, the current plan, then, when they do upgrade the road, is it going to stop right where that property, new property line, and then eventually, as new tenants come in, they'll continue to?
Well, let's hope no. I mean, our requirements are in place that they do this, the lease this section, but I think with my conversations with the grandchildren's trust who owns the property and their discussions with the new property management agency is that their intentions are to do it all at once. And I stopped from promising that, but we would encourage that, and I think that's the direction in which they're going. But right now, the requirement specifically is for the frontage along this project, but I think it'll go all the way through.
Okay, thank you.
We hate that access road.
Nothing more.
Further comments or questions? Okay, gentlemen, I need a, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S18-7 with the attached four conditions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, second.
And I have a second, and we need one more roll call.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries for a zero, and we're looking forward to that new development. And once again, city, thanks for, city staff, thanks for getting all this squared away so it'll look good and be easily maintained. Gentlemen, we are completely out of agenda, so I will ask for anything else for the good of the order. Then I'll ask for an adjournment, motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I second.
And we are at 6:34. Thank you very much.